I'll call the meeting to order and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenly.
President.
Trustee Wotecki.
Present.
Trustee Dante.
Present.
Supervisor Bussey.
Present.
Okay, do we have any public comment? If not, we'll move forward to consent agenda. You've all had a chance to look through the payroll and the bills and look through the various reports that I've provided in social services, employment, food pantry, youth services, adult family counseling, transportation and financials. Are there any questions?
No, sir.
If not, can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, um, we'll take.
Who was it?
It was Vince, Dale and then Vince.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a roll call vote.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Wotecki.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussey.
Aye. All right, we have the minutes of December 27th, the regular board meeting. Need to approve the minutes. Are there any questions or any, any changes that are necessary?
No, sir.
Okay, a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Wotecki.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussey.
Aye. Okay, presentations, the first one will be the clerk, Saturn, for the agency grant committee.
I'm gonna go over there so. You should have a packet that's four pages for my presentation. And I just wanted to share, this is the first year that we've had the agency grant committee. In the past, we have done it, the Board of Trustees has done it. And I think this was a great way to review the agencies and decide on the grants because on the committee, along with myself, Corey Dewey, the social services director was on it, Luanne Pross, clinical counseling director, and Dean Reschke, former clinical counseling director, along with two trustees, Vince Dante and Dale Nierdowski. But it was very helpful because Corey and Luanne and Dean especially were able to give us a lot of insight because they were familiar with the agencies. And Dale has been on the board quite a while, so he was familiar with the process. And Vince knows some of the agencies from being out in the community, so that was very helpful. The goals this year were to review the application and revamp that. And Corey was able to give us applications to look at from quite a few other townships. So we were able to update our application. Our second goal was to update the process. Oh, I got up here, so I didn't have to wear this. We used to do this process a couple months later. And so when the budget was being done, we were not ready with the amounts for the grants. So we were able to finish the application in August and send that out at the end of August. And then the date to get it back was November 1st. That gave us time to review the agencies and do presentations with some of them before the budget process started. Another goal was to eliminate any duplicate services if, if that was an issue. And then we want to have a presentation by each agency every three years. So this year, we interviewed 10 agencies or had them do presentations. So we used to have the agencies present more often in the past. And then we weren't doing that as much, but we want to make sure that each agency comes in at least every three years. Okay, so the process, as I mentioned, was we redid the application in August, sent out the applications in September, and then they were due the beginning of November. And then we reviewed all the applications. Administrator Piac was very helpful in contacting some of them with clarifications that we needed. I know Corey Dewey also contacted some of them and got some questions answered. We had three new applications, new agencies. So we interviewed then them and we picked seven other agencies that either were very large grant amounts or had not been having a presentation for a long time. So the new agencies were Elder Works, Alyssa's Mission and Can Win. And the current agencies we interviewed and had present were Northwest Compass, Shelter, Little City, Lifespan, Wings, Hands On and Alexian Brothers Center for Mental Health. I just have to say, I really enjoy, I've always enjoyed when the board did this because I really enjoyed hearing that people from the agencies come and present. And it's just very humbling to, for them to share and tell whatever way they're helping people, just the people that are coming in and what they're dealing with in their life and the challenges they have in their life is just really a bit overwhelming. But it's so exciting to see these people's passion for helping people in different ways. So I think it's awesome that we are supporting these agencies to help our residents rather than reinventing the wheel ourselves because they already know, you know, what their areas where they're helping people and they do a great job at it. So I really enjoyed having the different agencies come in and present. This year, we did add a category for emergency grants. I don't know if it's on your spreadsheet, I don't think so on the back of your packet. But it was last year, I think, that we gave money for an emergency grant to pads to help them house the homeless in a hotel because the churches were not available during the pandemic. So we wanted to have funds available if grants come up during the year that we would like to help with. So we put that emergency fund in. So on the last page, you should have a spreadsheet which will tell you all of the agencies we're supporting this year. It gives a description of what they do. Hello there. And then the ones in yellow at the, at the first column show when we met with them, had a presentation with them. And then the second column is the grant amount requested and the third column is the grant amount that we gave to them this year. Out of the three new agencies, we did fund Can Win and Alyssa's Mission, the amount they requested. We did not fund Elder Works and that was just because the services that they are offering seniors is, we're already doing those things at the township. And then a couple others, we didn't fund Kenneth Young, the same amount they requested because now that we have the agreement with Jocelyn Center to do the medication for our counseling resident, our residents in counseling that need medications, that money was shifted over to the Jocelyn Center. So that amount is different. And then, let's see, what else? Glen Kirk was not funded. It was maintenance and capital improvements on a home. And we decided that was not something we were going to fund. And fellowship housing was not funded because all of the residents that were getting services are leaving our township. So another one that it was an issue with just being services for our residents or not, Alexian Brothers Medical Center for Mental Health. They have a counselor at Elk Grove Town, or Elk Grove High School and Rolling Meadows High School. Most of our, most of Rolling Meadows students are not in our township. So there's, was lowered just because we covered Elk Grove and just part of Rolling Meadows. So we did, you know, kind of clean up to make sure we were working. Some of the agencies, I don't think really even understood what our boundaries are, which is confusing if you're not, you know, not used to that. So I think that is it. And you can see all the different, different services they offer. Alyssa's Mission, the new one, they have programs at our junior highs in our high schools in District 59 and 214, suicide prevention. And it's, it was, sounded like a wonderful program and really needed now. So we were excited, they applied. And then the other new one, Can Win, they have quite a few people working there who speak Korean, Japanese and other Asian languages. And we do have population in our township of Korean and other Asian communities. So that was, Corey was very excited about that one, that we could have a partnership with them. So, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, was there any, was there any that you had, that we had in past years that just didn't respond? Didn't put in an application or anything, or?
Yeah, I think we did, but I don't remember who they are. Paul, do you remember if there was anyone?
There was, there was a number of, there always are.
Oh, okay.
For some reason or the other. A couple, last year, Maryville Academy, I think was one. They discontinued what they were doing, that program went away, so they didn't.
Oh, okay.
They didn't even give a grant last year. Then there was another entity.
Was it? Not Journeys?
I think Playhouse was also.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
They had, they do, not even see, but I think that they, I don't think so, I just the location in Jean Bourg, or if they closed it or whatever, but G G didn't respond to it this year as well. I think there were three or four, there always are.
Cool.
I just want to say that I really appreciate what the committee has done. I mean, for the, I feel for the first time in a while, we've really taken a close, hard look at where we're spending our dollars and making sure that the taxpayers' money's being applied to where it's needed the most, that it's not, we're not duplicating our efforts, that we're making sure that it's really having a positive effect or an impact on the residents of Elk Grove Township. And, and I, I think this is not only going to mean that our, our, our taxpayers' dollars are going to go to a more effective and a, to be used more effectively and more impactfully. But I also think it will make these organizations realize that we're serious about what they return to the community as well, too, that we will pay, pay attention to this.
Yeah. The other thing is, when we did have the trustee board review the applications, that was good because we all got to know the agencies and what they do. So I know that George talked about rotating trustees in and out every couple of years. So all of you will get to, you know, know the agencies, which would be awesome.
The clerk's gonna stay in charge, but the trustees will rotate.
It's a deal.
Okay. Well, thank you, Sue Ellen.
Sure.
All right, the next presentation is regarding admin and our administrator's gonna provide that. This is another one of the department head presentations that we're gonna wash through on a, on an annual basis.
I got it, thank you. Okay, so the Department of Administration, these are all of the subcategories of the administration department. So I know some of you have been involved or know about these, either because you've come in or you've heard us talk about them in the past. But senior and disabled transportation is a big one that we have. There's, there's thousands of trips that, that the township front office staff and administration take care of, scheduling and then working with the drivers. We have three drivers that are out Monday through Friday. And they take people all over the township, any place within the township. For our three buses that we have, we have the three drivers. There's also, and that's for senior and disabled people, that people don't have to be a senior necessarily to ride. If they're permanently disabled and 18 years or older, they can ride the bus. The other thing, the next thing is, is passports. A lot of people don't know that we do passports. A lot of people think of the post office for that. This post office across the street does not do passports. So when we came, I went and was, got to be their best friend and told them that we could take care of all their passport things. So they were very happy, as were we. So you'll see details later on in the presentation, but our passport numbers have just taken off. It's just a, a big, big help to everybody in the community. Temporary handicap placards, that's what you see in the picture there. We, with a completed application from a doctor, will be able, are able to provide temporary handicap placards for people. 60 days, I think, is probably the norm and they can go up from there. I think 90 days or six months actually as well. Anything with a full-time handicap, that has to go through the Secretary of State's office to get the license plate and, and that to be something more than just temporary. Fishing and hunting licenses, we do, that has its peaks and valleys. There's, we don't do a lot of them, but it's a very convenient thing for a lot of people that come in. Seems like the same people come in every year and just are glad that we're here and that they can get it since they go over to Bussey Woods and, and the other places and fish in the area. Notary public services, some people don't know that we do that. That's an easy thing. Connie's office does that as well. I think all three of them are notaries, as well as all the ladies in the front office, or two of the three, I think, in the front office are. We also take care of scheduling the meetings for all the people that come in here and we're actually getting more groups that are coming in. Right now, we have three, four groups that are continually booking once a month. And that's for, actually not once a month, they're, they're there every month. In, in some instances, like the Greater O'Hare GOA, they have a networking group that meets here every Friday morning. And then we have a visage group that meets here once a month. And we have the mail carriers, the union for the mail carriers in this area. They used to meet at our other building and they come in twice a month. And then we have another group through GOA that they have something, that they just started a new program called Learn at Lunch or Learn Over Lunch. And it's a networking event that takes place. They serve lunch and then people get to, you know, network at that time. And they felt the room was just, you know, perfect size, they love it, they know it from the other networking group that's here. So that's another group that we have that have been consistently booking with us. The rules that we have set down are that if people rent or use the facility, rent if you will, during the day that we're, when we're open, there's no charge for that. But if people want to use the facility off hours, then it's $30 an hour for them to do it. And most people are just tickled to death to do that because it's a lot cheaper than anyplace else they can go. So the doors are automatically locked and unlocked and we can do that remotely and ahead of time, so that's very easy for people. So that, that is kind of becoming a big thing with people as well, as far as more people. We actually had the Elk Grove Village Garden Club in here last week during the day for a meeting as well. And they just loved the spot, so hopefully everybody will tell their friends and we'll have a lot more people in here. The administration area is also in charge of the building security. Like I said, the doors, all the cameras that we monitor when, when necessary, the building maintenance, the public relations, the newsletter, the, the press releases, all the social media, that's done up in the administration area as well. So the next one that we will talk about is the passport applications. This, these are all the things I just mentioned. This is just some more details about that. Nothing new there. You'll see on the next slide, the, oops, the next slide is the passport services. If you look, you know, the numbers are unbelievable. And they're even more unbelievable when you look at just two years ago, we did 261. And this past year, we did 428. So heck of a number. So most people don't realize this, but as far as their passports, if the passport has not been expired for five years or longer, they can send in the application themselves to renew that. The people that come in, either because their kids go from a level of being a child to being an, and another type of category, they have to get a different passport. So those people come in, people that are first time passport people and people that have let their passport expire for over five years, those are ones we deal with. So if you think about it, I mean, this could be a heck of a lot bigger if we dealt with people that just came in and wanted some help and somebody to review their application. So this is, this is a great number, the, the ladies in the front office, there's two in the administration area, and then a lady that used to work in the administration office is now in social services. She speaks Spanish and she helps us out when necessary as well. The meeting hall information I've told you about, which is the next thing. Transportation, this just gives kind of a breakdown of the different categories we have. The transportation, onboarding, coordination, all that stuff takes place in the front office. The trip program is something that is a pace-funded, basically, program that the four townships, Hanover, Palatine, Schaumburg and Wheeling are a party of, are a part of. And this is basically for people that need to go to medical appointments only outside the township. Because our senior and disabled bus only goes to addresses within the township. This will take people to medical offices outside the township. And it'll go to various veterans places. It goes to North Chicago, it goes to the one down south, I can't think of what it is. But there's, there's multiple places.
Can you give a different slide or is it?
Oh, I'm sorry. There you go. Sorry about that. So that is a big help for a lot of people, especially, we've taken veterans a lot of places where they had a doctor that was at a specific veterans facility and we were able to take them there. The, the township transportation program is free or free will offering if people want to give us some, a tidbit of, of money for that. The trip program is there, every time that somebody crosses a township border, it's $5 with a maximum of two borders that they cross. So if they're going from here to Great Lakes, I don't know how many townships that would go through, but they would only cost them $10 one way. So $20 round trip. And they're very happy to do it if they don't have, there are people that are in a need for transportation, they don't have anybody to take them or can't take them or are working or whatever, they're happy to take this, this bus. So it, it runs, I think it's, if not seven, it runs six days a week. So it, it's a very, it's very convenient. It does run seven days a week for medical appointments only. The last thing that we have is the discount taxi. That's something, someone we partner with is 303 Taxi. It's for people 55 years and over or anybody that's 18 and disabled. It's a $5 discount. We actually went to a new program this past year, right before COVID, or last year, I guess it was, before COVID. And it's a debit card, basically. So every month, the first of every month, they get $50 loaded on this debit card. And so they're able to take the debit card, go on a taxi ride and swipe, and it'll swipe $5 at a time. And that's what they're allowed, $5 per ride. So basically, they can go five round trips, 10 single trips, whatever. And we ask that they, the rides either begin or terminate in the township. Because that's what the idea is for, is to get them around in the township to be able to go where they need to go. We're not looking to send them to Chicago every other week and pay for, you know, $20 worth of cab, or $50 worth of cab ride. So, so that's, that, then you'll see on the next page is the recap of the TRIP program, which is the acronym, is Township Riders Initiative Program. And you can see that we really went up in '21 on that. And again, looking back at, you know, 28, 2018 and 2019, they were very similar. But then, of course, we took the big dip in '20 to about, probably about 20% off of that. But then we've basically 100% increased from 2020 to 2021. And it's still, people are still calling and, and writing and we're trying to, we try to publicize that as much as possible so people can get to where they're going outside, I mean, inside the area. So the last one is not too nice a chart, the taxi program. It's, it's really bad. The people that, from the taxi companies and other organizations tell us that the taxi drivers are few and far between now. And so we've had a lot of people call and tell us, you know, just bluntly about cabs is that it's hard to come by. They promise that they'll come and pick up at a certain time and they don't show up or they show up very, very late. So, and we're tied to that program. So we've suffered and the people that ride have suffered, but we don't know how to repair that at this point in time. You can't grow people on trees that want to be a taxi driver, so. And I understood recently in the past that Uber had a problem, you know, keeping drivers there for a while, too, that they, a big dip in, in number of drivers that they were employing as well. So that's the recap of what we do at administration. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Any questions for Paul?
I just have a quick question. You handle a lot of things up there and especially with the transportation. Are we doing okay with the number of employees we have and all that they need to accomplish?
For transportation?
And just overall, yeah?
Yeah, we're fine.
Okay.
We're fine.
Would, would you just explain what the roles of each of the, the staff is?
Okay, so in the front, there's Kasha, Izzy and Debbie. And they three tag team on the incoming phone calls in the morning for transportation, for the people that ride our buses. Because what we do is we take the reservations up to, I think it's two days in advance or two or three days in advance. So if somebody wants to go to Walgreens on Thursday, they can call us and say, hi, I'd like to go on Thursday. So then they put it on a sheet and then one of the bus drivers routes them based upon how many people we have, which determines how many buses we're gonna put out there. We do a lot of transporting of people for dialysis on Monday, Wednesday, Fridays. Those are big days for us. Doctor's appointments are big days when people, you know, go out on those off days, Tuesday, Thursday. You know, doctor's appointments are all the time, but dialysis, so they don't have to go on Saturday and they can get a ride from us every day that they go to dialysis instead of going Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, which would be a problem for them on Saturday, they go Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So the, the person that does all the routing has to figure all that out. And what those ladies do is they, they get the phone calls and the, they have a sheet in front of them that shows what approximate time we're going to pick them up, to take them to Walgreens, to take them to the doctor, to take them to get a haircut, you know, grocery store, whatever. And then when they're there, they kind of sometimes tell us how much time they'd like to be there. Other times, they'll say, well, we'll call. So when they're done, they'll call in and say, hey, you know what, I'm at Walgreens, I'm ready to go home. This is Mrs. Smith, whatever. And so then the ladies will get the drivers, the driver that's supposed to pick them up on the line and say, okay, Mrs. Smith is ready, how much longer will it be till you can get there? You know, it could be that it's an hour, it could be it's like 15 minutes, could be I'm around the corner, I'm, I'll see him in 30 seconds, you know, whatever. So they coordinate all of that stuff with, with the transportation, which is a big part of what they do. They also talk to everybody that comes in the front door, that whether they're going to Connie's department or whether they're coming in for a passport, or they have a question about something else in the building, they've gone to the wrong door, whatever, they take care of all those things. The other thing is, is Erica is in the front office. She's the, our, the finance director and she's just around the corner from me and she handles all the financial stuff, as you know, the audits and the monthly financials and all those kinds of things. That's administration. There's, like I said, there's three bus drivers there. We have one person that is in charge of bike safety, that's Sandy. And then as part of administration is Kaylee. And when we have a part timer, it'll be that person as well, is under administration as well. So all of those people that staff those departments are the ones that are, fall under administration. I don't think I've left anybody out. I think I got everybody.
Okay. Anything else? I, I think the administration department is kind of the glue to the township, as you would say, is they, they. township, as you would say, is they, they, they basically are the facing, the front-facing component of the department, and, and also are the ones that do a lot of the nuts and bolts stuff with our finances, with our, our, our interaction with the community, with the coordination of a lot of stuff. And they play a, sort of a quiet, but a really important role in terms of what we do. So, and Paul is, as you know, Paul's the one that, that manages that, but he's, you know, he's the, the one that, that, that kind of keeps the whole township organization in, in touch and connected as well, too. So I, I thank you guys for the work you do. Any other?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll go to the reports, the elected officials' reports, the assessor.
You have my report. I included our numbers from 2021. Obviously, with the pandemic, one would think that those numbers would have decreased. However, because of the change in the way we approached our taxpayers and we serviced them, we did over 11,000 pieces of business for our taxpayers last year. Now, this could be higher because we could have had, for example, additional seminars for appeals with either the county assessor or the board of review. We did have one of, board of review outreach. We had about 81 people that attended that. The seminar from the county was via Zoom and very poorly attended, as you can well imagine. So from that standpoint, walk-ins and phone calls were plentiful. I think the way we chose to handle it more in line with appointments so that the office did not become congested with people, particularly under, you know, the pandemic circumstances, worked out extremely well, and will probably be something that we continue, simply because from that standpoint, it saves our taxpayers' time. They're not coming in and sitting around the office waiting to be served. They have a specific, a specific time. So that's important to, to be aware of. The other thing that you need to be aware of, we sent out emails to approximately, and phone calls to approximately 8,000 people, telling them that we had been informed by the Cook County Assessor's Office that we would have the forms for exemptions the first week in February. And so we were delighted to get that information out. And the next day after we had sent that information out, we got notified that, well, no, we kind of think in March now. So this is becoming more and more problematic for us. I know that in years past, you know, I was always told, we always knew exactly when things were going to happen with the county. We didn't then, and we most certainly don't now. The other thing is that we should have been open for board of review appeals last year. We still have not been open because we have not been certified by the county assessor. So we go to the computer every morning and see if we have moved up on the list. We've been juxtapositioned a couple of times, but we won't know until we check the computer in the morning when we're going to be open for board of review. So this makes it very difficult to communicate with our taxpayers. As soon as we're notified, we'll send out an email blast and we'll send out a robocall. The other thing I can tell you that we've tried to publicize is that exemptions will roll over again the same as they were last year. Now, I hope it's not quite the same as it was last year because the county dropped thousands of exemptions, and we had a lot of seniors coming in where their freeze had been dropped, or the senior had been dropped, or their year, their base year for their freeze was incorrect. So that did, that was very problematic. So hopefully, this year, they will just simply roll them over. We will be taking prime applications, however, as soon as we have the forms. That's it.
Any questions?
Hey, how's this affect the installments?
I don't see that there's any way in the world that the second installment will be out on time. As with the first installment, that's due and payable March 1st, and that's exactly, you know, 55% of your previous bill. So that's pretty much a no-brainer for the treasurer's office. Where it gets interesting, because we will be going into, not only will we have board of review appeals, we will then have the triennial reassessment with the county, and then we will have board of appeals again. So this is going to be a really interesting year. However, when getting back to your original question about the second installment, yeah, you've got to have all of those exemptions complete. And the fact of the matter is that the townships are not going to be certified to put a value in to generate a tax bill. So, no, we're not going, I, I only, I can only guess. But I have not talked to one assessment professional who feels that the second installment will be on time.
Any other questions for Connie?
No.
If not, clerk?
Okay. I have a written report. No FOIA's or filings this month. Yearly state mandated sexual harassment prevention training information has been given to the township staff and elected officials. That is required for all of us to do each year. And then a couple of things that have happened since then, since I did my report, the attorney general's website is up for the Open Meetings Act training that is required for all newly elected officials. So I did give the trustees a handout on how to get into that training, get that done. You just give me, send me your certificate when you've completed it. And then I also gave out some handouts for a Township Officials of Illinois training that is in March in Naperville. So if some of you can make it to that one, it's a full-day training, and I'm sure it would be very worthwhile. And that's it.
If you plan to attend something like that, that the, the training in Naperville, please indicate to Paul that you plan to attend so that we're aware of that, we're aware of your participation. And then you submit as part of your expenses when you, when you finish with it.
If, when you have those educational seminars or whatever you're doing, you pay for, it's actually better, easier for us, I think.
That's right.
Is if you go through us, and then we book them all at one time, and put them on the credit, account of credit card.
That's a, that's a, that's a good point, is that it's better to go through, I mean, not only just inform, but, but let them then register you for the event. If there are any legitimate additional expenses, then you can file, file for that.
Yeah, just fill out, if there's a form, just fill out the form and send it in. I mean, we don't need to write down your address.
No.
You guys can do all that, but just send us in the form. When it's completed, then we'll take it from there.
Okay. All right. Supervisor's report. We had the annual staff meeting, which, a week ago, where we, we met with, where I met with the staff to go over a review of what, what, what was accomplished and what was completed last year, as well as a little bit of a look ahead. I want to thank the, the trustees and clerk who also attended that meeting, and assessor. I think it's important for us to stay in front of the staff and keep them informed of what we're doing and what our, our vision is going forward. We also, I, I would also say, too, that as part of this internal communication effort that I, that I just felt was very important, we've, we've continued with the department presentations here with us, that shares the information that will continue this coming year. We'll have a different department present at, at each or almost every, almost every meeting. We'll also continue with the internal newsletter, which is, not only provides information what departments are doing, but also provides information about, if somebody has a birthday, somebody has, has a baby, whatever the case may be. Keeps us connected. Department heads will also meet, continue to meet monthly, I believe, is it monthly or by, by, by month? Okay, monthly. And this is to make sure they're together and they're sharing information as to what's happening at departments, if there's any way they can cooperate or work with each other. And we've also been periodically doing a staff lunches once a month, because that was in-
That was in the summer.
In the summer, right. We'd been doing it in the summer so that people could get together. The weather was good. People get together and can talk and interact as well during that. And finally, I think what, what I think it's also hopeful for us to do a little bit is, Vince had a, a good idea, trustee Dante, is try to find ways to interact with the staff and learn a little bit more what they're doing, not just through the presentation, and not just through attending the annual meetings and the likes, but also, Vince was talking about a potential ride-along with the senior bus. That'd be an example of some way that you can maybe find a way to interact and to see what they're doing and what, what it, what that, what that service encompasses, and what the value of it is to the, to the, to the township and our residents. So any way that you can identify something, or if one of you does and wants to share it with the others, I'd be certainly encourage that type of initiative. I will go on a couple of other things. On the traffic situation issues that were raised by the residents in the Repalo and Durking areas, that has been an effort that our administrator and I have been working on with the Cook County Sheriff's Office. We've got great cooperation from them. We've done, there's been field interviews, there's been a survey sent out, there's been a lot of extra work that's been done on this to try to come up with a plan. And that plan has largely been put together by Sergeant Brown of the, of Cook County. There will be a meeting, probably, I think on February 9th, with the major players, the Cook, the commissioner, Cook County Commissioner's Office, the Oak Grove Police, the Sheriff's Office, Cook County Sheriff's Office, and us, to kind of make sure we're all on the same page. And then a follow-up to that will be a meeting with the residents to lay forth, put out the plan. And, and each of the, each of the stakeholders in this will have a, a certain responsibility. For us, it will largely be signs and the road, things that, physical changes or additions to the road or signage. And the other players have other responsibilities have to do. So we're moving along with that. We'll hopefully be able to put that to rest and, and meet the needs of the community in that regard. The remediation here at, in our, our property here, once again, we're still sort of at the same point, where we're trying to identify now what type of permeable or impermeable surface we need to put down and what it needs to cover. And we, we have to determine that before we can move ahead with the challenge course and bike safety. And we've, and we've, we've contracted with, we've, we've established a relationship with Pioneer Engineering and Environmental. That will be our new environmental consultant. And they are going through the existing NFR and other documentation to determine what requirements we have or don't have. And hopefully, hopefully, we'll, we will be able to determine that we can move forward. Otherwise, we may have to take further action to either get a waiver or to work to, to re-engineer what we're doing in some way. The, I want to encourage you guys to reach out in the community. I will be talking to the Lions, the Oak Grove Village Lions Club, I think in two, three weeks, doing a presentation. We have three presentations available for you to use. If you, there's a group that, that you, that you can establish a relationship with, where they'll want you to present. We have a, one that's based on services, one's that based, overall, talks overall about the township, and one that goes really in-depth. And that's the one I use for the law school course, and, and University of Illinois. So that may not be the one you want to use. But the other two, one's services and one's, one's an overview of the township. And I, I would think for like Rotary, or Lions Clubs, or, or service groups, that this is not a bad presentation. It wouldn't be bad for one of us to go and do a presentation with these groups. So they're familiar with what we provide and what we do. As we've always said, we're one of the best forms of government that nobody's heard about. There are, those are available, and along with that will be the equipment to, to, a laptop and everything to, to, to run, to be able to do the presentation. And then finally, we're, we're, we're moving along on the renovation or the updating of the website. I think I'm, I have a meeting tomorrow with our, our consultant on that. And I think once that's done, I think she has all the input from everybody else. And then we'll begin formulating an updated website, which is easier for residents to use, and, and highlights those areas that are most, that are most used or most popular, so that people have access easier, in an easier fashion, in a, in a more meaningful way. That's all I've got to say right now. Is there any other questions, or anybody has any questions for me?
Yeah, I was wondering, like, so who, or what, who makes the decision to say what is allowable for the impermeable, for what we need to do?
The expenses you're talking about?
No, no, what's, 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 what they require? Who makes that decision? Say, this is-
For the, for the website?
No, no.
For the challenge.
For the service.
Oh, the challenge course.
Yeah.
That, that will be termed by the Illinois EPA. Illinois Environmental Protection Agency is the one, they have, they, they're the ones that, they're the ones that, that, how would you say, that issue the net not, no further remediation required. And there is a no further remediation required document that currently exists for our property, because the village went and did initial, did remediation in around 2000. And they then were able to obtain an NFR. The problem is, after that, since we got this property, tanks were still needed to be removed. And when they removed those tanks, they discovered there was still contamination. The village, and, and we worked together to try to find a way to either limit the amount of remediation that had to be done, or to, to keep the old NFR in place. The, the IEP A decided that the old NFR was good enough. The, the issue here was, had not gotten worse. It was a little bit more than the standard, but they were okay with it. Well, then, when we got into the NFR, the old NFR, and really looked at it in more detail, and I had our attorneys look at it, they discovered that it, it requires, the way the verbiage is, they require an, a non-permeable, an impermeable surface over our whole property. That means asphalt or concrete, over the whole property. So that would mean that if we meet the requirements of the NFR, we would have to, if we want to put a bike safety or a service, or a, a challenge course in, we'd have to go down, put a layer of asphalt or contra, contra, concrete in, and then put stuff on top of it. That's going to be extremely, extremely more expensive. What we're hoping for is that it, it, that we're misreading it at this point, or that we can get a waiver that it doesn't need to be the whole property, because that seems excessive. Doesn't seem what should have to be required. Or that if we have to do anything like that, that maybe we can use, instead of concrete or asphalt, we can use some sort of matting or something like that. So that's where we, that's where we are right now. We're just not sure what type of surface we need to, we need to have out there.
And do we have any guess? I, I know we probably don't, as to when we'll get the answer to that.
No, no.
It's like, yeah.
No, no. You're dealing, you're dealing with the IEP. So, I mean, it could be anything.
Has the EPA given an indication as to what the, you know, overall hazard level is to somebody using the course?
Yeah, we-
Leaving the, 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 the current process in place without needing any other remediation?
No, if you have an NFR, that means there's no, no, that, that means that there is, that it meets the, the standards for safe use.
Okay. So there, in other words, there isn't any-
Right.
-chemical issue that you're going to-
There, there is a, there is a, there is, you know, there's standards. It's not totally clean. But it, it's, if it's under, or actually here it's at, or slightly above that, that required level, they feel that's adequate, and they issue an NFR, which means you don't have to do any further remediation. And if you sell the property, or do something with the property, you generally don't have any restrictions. However, they put a restriction on this, saying that, that the whole property needed to be covered, not just a small area, which is unusual.
Okay. I mean, it answers, I mean, it answers the question. My, my, my only thing was, is that there is, is there any more harm that could be done to somebody being out there with the current, the way it currently is? And if it's not, then-
No, it's not supposed to. However, we have to meet, to be able to keep that NFR in, 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 in place, we have to meet, we have to meet the requirement- to meet the requirements of it. And we're trying to clarify the requirements or trying to get, and if necessary, have to get a waiver or the remediate, or the surfaces that we provide is something that is more workable for us to do. That's why we got a consultant because Paul and I, I mean, I've done a lot of remediation with family property before, but I don't know, I don't know everything, so. Okay, let's see here. Is there any, anything else for me? Any other questions for me?
Nope.
No? Okay, let's go on then. There's no correspondence, there's no old business, so we'll go on to the new business. We will be, in the first two things here, we'll be dealing with the tentative budgets, the budgets for the town fund, general assistance and sewer, and the tentative budget for the road department. I would.
George.
We're supposed to approve the? Oh, I'm sorry, we can put a motion, if you, a motion approved. Is there, your motion to approve the elected officials? Okay, second?
Wait, who seconded, sorry?
Who seconded?
Dale.
Dale.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, and we're going to new business again here. The tentative budgets for town fund, general assistance, and road department, those are the three primary budgets. Sewer is an extra one that we have because we have sewer responsibilities, and that is a pay-as-you-go type budget. It's funded by the people that use it. It's not a property tax item. That substitute teaching at Elk Grove High School, they're dying, forget people. Okay, so, and I'll go through this here. In the, the process we're going to be in here is tonight, we're going to look at the tentative budget. We're going to talk through it. Any questions or any, any issues that anyone has, we'll discuss this evening. Then the budget will be, probably be tweaked between now and the February meeting, and we will have before the February meeting, a hearing. We have to, today's budget has to lay on the table for 30 days. It was a hearing before our board meeting in February, and then after the hearing, we will discuss it again, and we'll approve the, we'll have to approve the tentative budget, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then it'll, we'll have another couple of weeks when we'll come back and approve the final budget. So this budget is a tentative, we'll discuss it tonight, there'll be tweaks to it, we'll discuss it again in February, in addition to having a public hearing, and then it'll be approved in March. And all along the way there, there couldn't be tweaks or changes as necessary. So what I'm going to do tonight is just kind of go through the budget. I'm not going to go down every line item, but I'll go through every section and highlight any key things, and any questions that you have about the budget, please wait till we, to that particular section we go through. So let's start with the town fund. The town fund, the total revenues that we expect to receive in the 2022-23 period or year, fiscal year, is $2,443,971. If you look up at the top, the 2,228,471, that is our levy and a 3% cost loss that the county adds to that. What that cost loss is, is they're assuming that we're not going to be able to collect everything that we've levied because there'll be appeals, there'll be people that just don't pay, and so they put another 3% on there is what they do. They put another 3% so that you, to try to make you whole. That maybe won't make you whole, maybe give you more than you need, we don't know, but that's what it is. Also, keep in mind that all this money doesn't come in at the same time. Some of this money can come in a year or two later, but the bulk of it will come in in the fiscal year. So that is the levy and the property tax, and then our total revenue, I just mentioned, at $2,443,971. On expenses, in the expense section, well, first of all, any questions on the revenue? Okay, then we'll go to expenses. On the expenses, only thing I'd point out here is if you notice utilities has gone up, that's partially because we have a bigger building and also because gas prices have gone up big time. If any of you noticed, your gas bills substantially higher. And that's what, we use gas for our boilers. Then the only other thing on there is, there's a couple items on there like community outreach and community recognition, which are things we sometimes use and sometimes don't use, and they're in there, but they may or may not, may not be used. Okay, any questions on the expenses?
No.
Okay, contractual services? Any questions there? Nothing really dramatically different? Okay, then we'll go over to commodities and miscellaneous. Any questions there? Okay, that's, is, there's no, that's pretty well the same, not changed year to year. Capital outlay, I will mention on the capital outlay that the one that I particularly point out here is, just because you may not know what this is, but the Lincoln and Martha, we have, and that's one of the unincorporated areas, and there are, we do have water pumps and stuff there, so that sometimes we have to release those or replace those pumps. That's what that dollar amount is. Otherwise, you notice on the capital outlays, we're talking about equipment, food pantry truck, youth and services, bike safety course, that's obviously a big number because that's what it's going to cost to, to put those, the bike safety course and the, and the challenge course in. And then the Landmeyer building, those are improvements that were being done that will probably address a little bit in the, later on, the change orders. So those are, those are capital expenses that we're having to do in equipment, food pantry truck, the courses out back, improvements to the building, Lincoln and Martha, which is an unincorporated area, we have some extra responsibilities, and then landscaping maintenance.
George, where would the new bus be under?
The new buses back in, under, we'll be getting, what's the new buses under? I'm forgetting right now.
Senior transportation.
Pardon?
Senior transportation.
Senior transportation, back in the senior transportation. Yeah, sometimes you would think it'd be in one section, but it's in another, and that's just historically how it's, how it's developed.
George, do we expect an increase in the landscape maintenance based on the youth service and bike safety course?
No.
Anything there that requires them to do anything?
Not, not, not really. It's going to be, a lot of that out there is going to be, the parking lot's going to, is going to be asphalt, and then where the bike safety and the challenge course are, is going to be, we've got mulch, sort of like a mulch-type base going in there now. Pardon?
Hardwood mulch.
Yeah, hardwood mulch.
Okay, it's at the end.
Now, that, every couple of years, that may need to be replaced or added to.
I know, that's bike safety.
But it should be, it should be fine for an extended period of time. And any other landscaping expenses, if there's bushes or something like that, that's minuscule in terms of trimming and so forth. Okay, under personnel expenses, if you'll notice that the, the staff salaries, the budget went down. If you, if you, if you annualize the number for this fiscal year, it'll end up being around, well, it's not going to be, it's going to be up, up near 415, but we had budgeted to be 450. Part of that reason why that number is coming down is because Kaylee and her part-time person in the food pantry, that, those expenses have been shifted to social services, to general assistance. So the 450, it goes down to 415, part of that is associated with the moving, the moving of the expenses from one, one section of the budget to another.
You're just transferring buckets?
It just, yeah, just transferring where, but it's being moved from the town fund to the GNA fund, because we have the resources. It seemed to fit there, and we have the resources to manage it there. Let's see, anything else? No. Any other questions on personnel expenses?
No.
Okay. The assessor's office, I don't think there's any major questions there. If you do, I can answer that, or I can have our assessor. No, no questions there, okay. Then we go to social services. There are no really, well, first, we start out with the agency funds. The report that, that, that the, that the agency committee has given to the board, that will be included in the next tentative budget, that will be added in. Right now, that's not, that's not in here. We just have a marker in here, but that will be added in, and at the next meeting, we need to address any changes or any issues, any problems you have with the, with the agency grant committee's recommendations. Otherwise, they will just be added as is to our, our budget here. Then if you go down along that same line to the, down below, you've got, you know, the bike safety, bike safety bus, the bike safety salaries and bike safety FICA, those items in here, that is largely unchanged. I would point out, though, that we do, we do arrange a bus to get kids to use the bike safety from the school here. We will, we will fund that for, for schools to do that. So that, that is a, that is an expense in there that, that is a bit, a bit unique.
That's not our buses?
No, it's not.
That's a regular school bus?
It's a regular school bus, yeah.
Okay.
We just fund it. Okay, if we go over the seniors, there's nothing particularly new there, but I do have, just to answer your question, under the, under the senior bus, new bus, we have 165,000 in there. Any bus that we, that we get is, needs to be custom designed because of the needs of the disabled and the elderly, and our, our, our team has a specific idea of what they think is needed. We were fortunate with the two new buses we have now, in that they were available for various reasons at a very cheap price, but that was a unique situation. These buses are not cheap, they're expensive. This may or may not happen in this fiscal year. We're, we're working with our, our bus team in terms of identifying specifically what they need and then reaching out to see if anyone can provide that. That doesn't happen overnight. So this may or may not happen in this fiscal year. What we, the buses we have right now certainly can operate another year, but we, there is one of them we should be, not too distant future, be, be replacing. But for right now, it's okay. Okay, and then we move to the adult and family counseling, which is also youth services. Under that, if you notice that the challenge course salaries, there's a $40,000 number there. What that is, is that's the, that's the contractors that Renee uses on youth services programs and on the challenge course. She's got about 10 of them, but she uses two or three of them specifically to help supplement her, to help support her when she runs programs that have multiple, multiple kids. And then I think that pretty well gets us through the town. Is there any other questions on that? The bottom line is, is we have revenue of, as I indicated upfront, $2,443,971. We have total expenses of 3,000, $3,324,660.25. That's a, a, that is, that's a, that's a deficit, if you want to use that word, of Now, we have in reserves 1.7 million. That, that 880 would probably bring that down to around 800,000, our reserves. But then we have a road, the road district owes us, has a loan out with us that they will be paying that back, and the road, the road also has a surplus. So our reserves will be in excess of 1, 1 million by the end of the year, and that's more than adequate for our purposes. Our run rate's about 300,000 a month, so that's close to three and a half, four months. Any other questions on the town fund?
No.
No? Okay. We go to road and bridge. Keep in mind that the road district is now the road department, but there still is a road district levy and budget. The only real difference is that instead of a highway commissioner running the road district, the board and the supervisor run the road department. We still have a levy and a, and a, and a budget in order to manage that. That, our expenses by making that shift have dropped by over 100,000 because we've cut out salaries and we've cut out some miscellaneous expenses. So we have saved money for the taxpayer and have simplified, or streamlined the, our road and bridge organization, but at this particular time, this, the, the budget still, and the levy and the budget still stay in place, are still continuing. So if you look at that, property tax levies, and then the, the, the personal property replacement tax, interest income, miscellaneous, any means we'll be raising about 374,000 for the road and bridge. The personal property replacement tax, there was a property tax at one time in Illinois that was done away with. When they did away with that, the state established a precedent or a process by which they fund, they give the township money to offset what we lost with the property tax, and then out of the money we receive, you'll see down under expenses, we then allocate part of that to the municipalities. So this is a very convoluted way of getting rid of the property tax, but still actually raising the money. That money that we're given probably comes through income taxes, and it comes to us, we then use that for the road and bridge, and then we, part of that has to go to the municipalities. So that's what the replacement, the property, the personal property replacement tax is, what we receive and why there's a, why there's a revenue and an expense side to it. Let's see here, anything else? That's revenues on expenses. We should be okay there. If there's any questions, salaries?
So I have a question.
Yeah.
So, obviously, we don't have highway commissioner, we, we have somebody to plow the streets, but, so do we still own, like, the, the equipment?
Yeah, what we, yeah, what we.
Are we going to continue to own that?
Yeah, what we have right now is, we have a, we have a highway field officer, highway field, what do we, what's the title?
Field maintenance.
Field maintenance, highway, highway, road and bridge field maintenance director, and it's Art Narodowski, and he is paid, he is part-time basis, and he oversees the brush pickup, the snow, snow plowing, and any other issues regarding maintenance or other issues that come up with the roads. And he works with Paul in making sure all that is handled with our contractors. The, the contractors we have is, we have, Kroll is our engineering firm, and then we also have a, a firm that does our brush pickup and some of the mowing in some of our, our areas such as over by the cemetery on New Orleans Night's Road, there's an area there we need to mow, he does that. Then what we have is, we've been working to establish a, an intergovernmental agreement with another township or with the villages that was not able to be completed this, for this winter, so we have, we hired, well, you know, hired Art. Art is doing the plowing for this year, using our equipment, with the idea being, and he's, he is paid, in addition to his salary, he's paid extra for each time he goes out on an hourly basis. And then at the end of this year, though, we are in discussions, or we've already been discussions with Elk Grove Village, and we're going to reach out to Mount Prospect and see if we can do a, under governmental agreement whereby they plow Elk Grove and Mount Prospect does Mount Prospect. At some point, you know, in Mount Prospect, I think that'll all get annexed, and we won't have to worry, probably just have to be working with Elk Grove Village ultimately.
And my fundamental question was, I know at some point I thought there was discussion that we were going to sell the equipment that we had, the trucks?
Right.
The snow plowing and stuff.
Right.
But currently, that?
No, currently, that's not, because we need it for this winter. But if we get those intergovernmental agreements set up, then we will sell all the equipment except probably the pickup truck, which we will, you can use for, well, the food pantry can use it, and also Art, our field, field officer, field director can use it as well too. But I think the rest of it, we would probably, we would sell, except for the pickup, wouldn't that probably be the case?
Right, you could have said, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, under, let me go down, go down the line here. The tree service has gone up. The reason that budget is up is simply, is largely because of, we are, we, it's brush pickup costs and, and some other, and also we've, we experienced a higher cost. and, and, and some other, and also we've, we experienced a higher cost associated with some of the storms. We lost more trees. We had a range to have those removed. So that's the brush pickup and the storms. We've just given ourselves a little more cushion because costs went up this last year. All right, under road and bridge again here, anything else? No, I think that's pretty well, so does, so in over, in, in total for road and bridge, the total revenue is 374,000, like I indicated. Total expenses are 213,950. And that means we have a surplus of 160,050. Paul, does this include, this does not include any anticipated payments they make on their loan to the town, does it? The budget? We don't have anything in there for them paying, ma-
Yeah, we do on the previous page. It's, it's identified as road and bridge loan and interest.
Okay, okay. Where's that?
But the balance, if you're asking about the balance on the loan, that's, that's carried on the balance sheet.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But I mean, we have not factored in here that they're going to pay us, that they're going to pay us any lump sums, which they, which we, if they have adequate reserves, we will do. We'll have them pay that down, right? Okay. All right. So that's, that is, that is the road and bridge. If we go now to general assistance budget. Revenues, 451,714. It's pretty well the same as, as that we had budgeted last year. Those revenues do tend to come in, tended to come in right around that range rather consistently. On expenses, if you go down the line here, I don't think anything is extraordinary except that you'll see that the, that the staff salaries have gone from 164,000 to 275,000. And that, yep.
You've got to go over a column on that thing.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
164 is year-to-date this year.
Right, that's, so 200,000, the budget was 200,000.
Right, there you go.
200,000, and that's going to 275. Sorry, we're 164 is year-to-date, but we've got three months still to go. So 275. And the reason for that increase of about 75,000 in the budget is not only a, a, a three, the 3% or 2%, whatever it is, pay, salary increase, but also that's Kaylee and the part-time food pantry person. This, they were added to this, shifted from the town to the road and bridge. Then also under home relief, if you turn to that page, that is the, you know, that's food, the GA, the EA, travel gasoline utilities, the EA utilities, clothing, laundry, the things we're spending on programs. If you notice the, the budget item there, the proposed budget on all these, all these years is, is high, 267,000, while the expenditures are significantly less. And the reason for that is, is we have to plan for worst case, which in a lot of cases, we don't even really know what it can be. There's medical liability issues, there's, for residents that we have some responsibility for. There is, there is, you know, there's, there's issues that could arise with the pandemic or with a major collapse of the economy that we, we have to maintain a, a, a strong balance in order to meet that requirement. That's one of our primary responsibilities. So that 267 is usually not spent. That is, that is, it's, it's a smaller amount of that is actually, is actually spent on a historical basis. So then if we go down then to total revenues of 451,714, our expenses, given that larger number under home relief, also comes in at 673,900, which is a, a, a negative number of 222,186. Now, part of, like I said, part of that is the home relief. So if you, if, if we're not spending 200,000 of that, then you're talking about, you know, a 220,000 and some of the extra expenses here account for that chunk with food, with the food salary, or the food supplies, food pantry supplies, and then the food pantry salaries. So it's, it's, it's explainable. And at the same token, our reserves are 1.5 million. So it's, it's, we have plenty of reserves and that deficit of 220,000 will not, will not be the case. It will not be 220,000. It won't even come close to it. Okay, so that's GA. Any questions? Anything else? No? Okay. And the last one is sewer. Only thing I'd point out there is the maintenance capital expenses. If you notice, that line item is 185,000. That's for the sewer linings. We're going through all of our sewers, step by step, area by area, and we're improving the, the sewer lines, bringing them up to code. And we're just, we're, we're just stepping through each year. We're improving a, upgrading a, a section of the sewers. We are coming close to the end of that. At that point, that number on the capital expenses will drop off substantially. And this is a, this is a fund that is sort of pay-as-you-go. So the residents are paying for these services. The taxpayer's not paying for them. We have 680,000 in reserves. This number will drop off. We're in a very strong position there. Probably what I would like to do at some point, since this, all these sewers lay under Mount Prospect, once we get them fully to upgrade it and fully in line with, 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 with proper standards, I'd like to address with Mount Prospect, work with Mount Prospect to take over the sewers. Because it's, it's their residents that are, that are using it and it is not one of our core competencies. And this is something that I would like to discuss with them at some point about us transferring these, the sewers over to them. But we have to get them up to standard before we do that. Okay? Any questions on the sewers?
Other than transferring them, is that something we would have, and they take over this, if we need to pay them?
No.
They would just take them?
No, in fact, there's a, there's a tax, a new law that was passed not that long ago that really makes the process easier for us.
Okay.
So we're just not going to force the issue until we can hand them a properly, a properly constructed or proper- Sewers that meet the standards.
Well, maintain sewer.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Anything else going back overall? Once again, what you need to do is go through this and, and identify any, any issues that you have, that you find are out of place or don't make sense to you, or line items that you don't understand what they are, that I haven't addressed here to you. And, and then I would say, reach out to Mayor Paul. Probably the easiest one is, is to reach out to Paul. And he can explain, or he can take your, take your, your questions or your suggestions. So we can take that into consideration before the, the next tentative budget comes out. That budget will come out before the hearing and meeting next time, and then you will see a clean one. So if you, you should be going through this. You have, should have already gone through it, but you should go through it again in the next two weeks or so. And any questions or suggestions or problems should be addressed then so that we can come to you with a updated tentative to go, going into the March meeting, I mean, the February meeting.
Can we get paper copies of this?
Yeah, you can. Yeah, you just have to, if the, we can print, we can print out the paper copies of this. I mean-
Sure they were.
Yeah, I mean, you've got them in here right now.
The way you have, we're going forward.
No, we don't.
We don't have them.
We didn't get them. We only, we're on our phone.
You emailed them, but they're not in the package.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought they were. I'm sorry, that's my-
I didn't know they weren't in there either.
They were leaving it off of our-
Oh, well, you should have brought that to the rest of the room. Now you realize they weren't in there. Oh, you know what? Yeah, I know how, nevermind. I know how to-
Okay. So hang around afterwards and you'll bring out the copies for them? The hard copies, yeah?
That's them?
Hang around, he'll bring the hard copies out to you. You should have got them in your package online, but the hard copies you-
I can print.
Yeah, anyway, but he'll, he'll come in and bring them out to you. Take, go through those, get back to us with any issues. And then we'll get you the updated ones before the meeting in February. We vote, we, we then at that point approve the tentative, after the hearing, approve the tentative after any discussion or any tweaks we make then. And then we will let it lay another two weeks or so, and then we'll, we'll vote on it, the final approval. Good? Okay. So that is, do we have to, do we have to approve the tentative budget tonight, Paul? Or is it just, just laid out on the table?
I believe it's just laid on the table.
Okay, and has to lay here-
Accepted at the next-
Yeah. So it's, we'll lay it on the table here for 30 days. Then we accept it, the tentative at the next meeting, and then we vote for final approval at the March meeting. Okay?
Because I think, I think that after I said that, I think I would- Yeah, the next meeting looks like that.
Okay. That's what I thought. Okay. Then we go down to Northside Projects, change order requests three and five. That should be in your package there.
Yes.
All right, this is when we were going back to the construction project that we're doing out back there. There is, there is three, it's change order three and change order five. The, if you, let's take a-
Three, four, and five.
Three, four, and five. Yeah, let's look at the, let's look at, which one first? Let's look at three. And that's the- Three and four.
Three, four, and five.
I don't have five.
You don't have five?
Got three, and I got four.
Are you sure? There can be five copies up the list.
The last one is five.
Nobody has five.
I have five. Do you want to use it?
No, I don't have it. That's a, that's a roofing. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have that. I didn't have it in my package I had from before. I, I, it was, it just wasn't in my, my previous package. She's gave me, she gave me here. I know, I know what it is. I just didn't have it in here. I didn't know if you hadn't passed it out. Okay, so let's start with three. That's the VE scope revisions. What that is value engineering. And what that basically means is we were trying to find ways to save money. And we went through with the, with the contractor to Intergal, to find areas where we could cut back, where we maybe over, over- that we were, that we were, that we had put into our, 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 our package more than we really needed and we were able to adjust it accordingly. So if you look here, the number, first one is playground equipment. We've downsized the playground equipment. So you're, we've reduced the challenge course equipment package. It's still, still a very, a very good package. It's, we just, we just moderated it some, to some ways, and we worked with Renee on that. And that saved us $80,000. Then the site furnishings, we eliminated one of the shade shelters and adjusted the, the other shelter to a, to, to some degree. And that, in a sense, downsized the site furnishings package. And we saved about $24,000 on that. And then on the playground surfacing, as we talked about, we had talked about a rubberized surface at one time. That cost was rather substantial. And after consultation with the, with our contractor, it was decided to go to a mulch, a plain mulch type of covering, which may periodically need to be, be kind of added to or redone. But the cost was rather substantial in terms of, in terms of the upfront cost of 96,000. That was, and then if you get to the fin, the fencing, we eliminated the, the complete fencing scope from the contract. We just took the fence out of it, and that was 145,940. Now, we put back into it some fencing for the, for the west, for the west-
The east.
East side, east side. And we will, that, what that basically does is allows us to go in and clean up that east side of the, of the building where the residents are. And allows us to clean all the weeds out of there and get up a structure which is, which is, which will replace those wooden fences that are falling down and, 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 and provide the residents with a much more attractive, cleaner look. So we took over the, the overall package down and then put, put a new one in. The net, 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 that will save us about 20,000 or so.
Will the challenge course be fenced in?
Yeah, that will be fenced in, yeah. We're talking about the outside fencing is what we're talking about right now. And then the site utilities, we had to put an addition in there for some additional drainage. We had not anticipated, but needs to be done to drain that area properly. So that's the, that's the, the, the value-added scope revisions in change order three. It would reduce our cost by 201,734. And I would argue that the product, in the, the product that we're still left with is still a very, very good product. It just, it just is much more in line with, I think, what we, what we need and, and doesn't, it doesn't go, I think we were a little bit overboard before, is what we were. We didn't need as much as we were, we were asking for. Would have been nice, but, sort of like when you build a house and you put all that nice stuff in, then you go, oops, this is a little too much. So that's three. Let's go to, let's go to four. What four is, now that's an addition to the, to our, our, our contract. And that is the addition of the bathroom and, and, and revisions to the bike safety room and the roof over it. Well, yeah, part of the roofing directly over that there. There's a roofing on five, too. But what this does is it allows us to take that back area, the north area, to take the existing bathroom, redo it, because it's in bad shape, redo it, clean out the bike safety, get that cleaned up, and then add a cage for the challenge course in the big, in the big room, north, the big north room. So right now, bike safety and challenge course are sharing a space. It's crowded, it's messy. We'll move the challenge course to a cage that she'll have in the, the big room. The bike safety on the same, will have their space to themselves and we'll get it re, re, reorganized and restructured so it's much easier and cleaner for her to work. And then we'll add a bathroom. So kids, when they're on the challenge course or when they're out on the bike safety, have a bathroom to come into. And it's, and it's within sight of the chap, of the chaperones and everything like that, or the, the instructors. So this is the cost that's associated with that. You know, once again, it's an estimate. You never know exactly what it's going to be. But this comes out to be about 124,300. And you can see the various components associated with it. Any questions on, on number four? Okay. On number five, which I was missing, is the existing warehouse roof renovations. When I say warehouse, that's that north, the north end, the, 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 the whole roofing area there. There is that, that's a flat roof. And, and there's, there's issues with the roofing. So this is additional roof renovations to the existing roof there to bring it up to, bring it up to code and also to bring it, and also to solve some of the issues we have in terms of leakage and, and other things. So that would be, that's 44,610. We weren't necessarily expecting this. We knew there was going to be some work, but this is, this is a little bit more than we thought. That's 40, so net, net, it's 49,000, 100, 49,071. If you add all this together, it's about break even. In other words, with the additions we needed to add versus what we took out, it sort of breaks out. And then you have in there a, a map of the, of the, of the facility back there, too. And that also shows you, I mean, I don't need to go through this now, but if we wanted to at some point, that also shows some of the remediation issues. Let's see here, anything else on the, on the, on the change orders? Okay, now, what I'm going to do is have a motion to approve this. This will be, this will then be integrated into the plan going forward and will be what we're hoping to be able, these are the things we're hoping to be able to get at next year. This coming fiscal year would be the bike safety, challenge course, the bathrooms, and the roofing, and the fences. That's our capital program for next year as, as we're envisioning it. Of course, there can always be bumps along the way where we're delayed or whatever the case. Maybe we find something that we didn't, didn't expect.
We could do some of that work, though, before we hear about the NFR.
Yeah, well, what they're doing is we're, we told them to go ahead with the demolition back there. You know, those, those old salt bins and stuff like that. They can take those out because we know we're not going to, regardless of what happens, we don't want them out there. So they're going to start with the demolition. And then hopefully by that point, we'll have an, we'll have an answer from our consultants on the, on the permeable surface. And once we get an answer on that, we can go ahead full board.
But isn't like the warehouse roof, is that, that's on?
Yeah, well, that, that will, that will probably be, but, but I think we want to get into the bathrooms and the, and the bike safety and, and those things. into the bathrooms and the, and the Bike Safety and, and those things, where we're actually going in and doing some interior work, that may affect the roofs, but we'll probably do those, the, the two roofing compartments, you know, in, afterward, in connection with that.
Oh, okay.
All right, any, any other questions? We're getting close to being done. My, 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 my hope is, is that once we get done with this final construction part of the building, and get all our program, all our facilities up in place and running, that then we can start focusing again on programs and services.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what my goal is, is a year from now, that that's where we can be focused on, and we're not dealing with this stuff as much anymore. All right, is there a, a motion to approve, um, Change Orders Three, Four, and Five? Make a motion?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee Wotecki?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi?
Aye. Okay, uh, the last thing here is Resolution Twenty-Twenty-One-Twelve. What we're doing is, we're adjusting, uh, the, uh, the meeting agenda, uh, we're requesting a, a, a change to that. Uh, what we ran into was a, uh, a conflict that I had with the, um, the March meeting, and I, we wanted to move that so that I could be present, uh, for that, for that meeting. Um, it's the, um, all the other meetings for the rest of the year are in place, it just would be Mar, March, we'd be moving it up. We don't have to have the, the tentative that's approved in February on the table for any, any specific lunch, uh, left length of time, um, so that, that, we can approve the, the, the budget at that time. I just wanted to make sure I was present to be able to participate in that. So that's why that meeting was moved, moved forward. Are there any questions on that? Any problems? Nope. Okay, if I have a motion to approve the, um, the, the Resolution Twenty-Twenty-One-Twelve, Board Meeting Schedule Revision?
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, can I have, uh, I'll do a roll call vote, anyway.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee Wotecki?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi?
Aye. Okay, um, and we're off to a new year here, and, uh, we had a, I thought we, we've accomplished a lot last year, both in terms of services and in terms of our capital programs, um, and, um, and I'm, I'm really kind of excited about some of the new additions we have in terms of programs, and I'm excited about some of the ideas that our departments have in terms of expanding and making our services more impactful and broader. So, um, in any case, um, I think we got a, a great year ahead of us.